We do have some executive session this evening. We have one for personnel with the town manager, and we have two under contracts, one to do with the Florence Fire Station and one with a union contract.
Right.
Anybody got anything else?
Personnel is in regards to the town manager?
In regards to town manager.
Okay.
It is. So any motion?
So moved.
Second.
And seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any need to amend the agenda this evening? I don't think we do.
Not for me, chief.
Nothing for me.
Move to adopt as written.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Need to adopt the agenda?
We did.
We did, that's right. Quiet, I'm just reading here, quick. Act on the slot board minutes. We had two of them.
Special meeting and the regular one.
Is there any omissions or corrections on the first one, which was the one in the afternoon?
Lister discussion.
That was the lister discussion. Here we go.
Is there anybody's questions? I is no.
What's that?
Anybody's got a question, there is no.
Oh.
Please tell the point. A question on the orders. We got a few of them tonight.
I do want to point out something for Joe's benefit.
Yep.
He had asked about costs to outfit the cruiser.
Yep.
And we had learned from Pat that as of the last meeting, there was about six thousand and change devoted to outfitting the cruiser, which was offset to some degree by a five thousand dollar army award to do so. We do have an additional expense tonight, which you may have seen in tonight's orders. I think that's going to be the end of the costs to outfit that cruiser.
There will be one small cost because we had to have the shotgun and rifle rack work on fifty pumping the floor, and that should be installed, and I'm thinking that'll be like a hundred bucks. Because we already have the rack, we just had to have some steel weld to it to get it to fit that way.
So is that one you were talking about, John, the Crosswind Technologies one, where the police valcor and fee?
No, I'm looking at Central Valley Communications Police Truck Radio Installation, seventeen hundred and eighty-two dollars, and that's in the original packet.
Okay.
The valcor is an annual fee for all seven officers for their interaction, communications.
I noticed there's a highway truck wipers and brakes, twenty-five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Was that a complete brake job, or must've been quite an extensive bit of work?
Yeah, a couple of canisters on the truck floor, or needed work.
You know, you've done that same work at home. We've replaced drums and shoes and the whole nine yards.
That's the tax.
Yeah.
Wondering if that's what was done. Is there a lot of miles on this truck that?
No.
Just the Western Star truck.
Yeah, that's the newest truck.
That's the newest.
Any idea what the mileage is, or?
Not a lot. I think it hasn't been one of our better.
No.
Investments.
Investments, no.
Wheels fall off and the other brakes.
Not one of our better, I mean, that was going to be a better truck, but boy.
Yeah, we had more issues than that than what we should.
Learn and learn. Probably be our first and last one, I don't know.
And I also see there was, the line striping was seven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Does that kind of compare with what we've done the last time, or is that?
I think we've been in the eight to ten thousand dollar range on line striping.
Yeah.
I wonder whether that'd be about the same as it was before, or?
Well, we've just started doing this a few years ago.
Started the last two years.
About three years, four years?
Two or three.
Two or three, and that's on the class three roads. The state is supposed to repaint the class two roads. The class three roads, we've started doing about three years ago, and this year we did, of course, the newly paved Whipple Hollow and West Creek Road, also did Sangamon and Plains Road to some degree, Depot Hill.
Personally, I think it's a good thing, and I had at least two people kind of get on my case about why it hadn't been done earlier, you know, and glad to see it's done, and I feel as though it's a good idea myself. I don't know about anybody else.
So that's why we did it.
I do have a question. Adam, what is Adam's show, a two or?
Joe.
It's a three.
It's a three?
And hopefully we pave within next, hopefully soon.
I'm not looking for paving, I was looking for the line striping.
Yeah, I remember from last year. The higher traffic.
Still on orders, or is that all done?
Oh, do you have more questions?
Well, we got payroll. No, we're done on orders, let's see.
Well, I guess the other thing, we gave two million dollars to the state for schools. That's what a third of what we give them.
It's give or take, yeah. They do it in big bunches until later in the year, but that's the first tranche I've seen.
Yeah, I just think the public ought to know how much we just gave them.
You have to swallow when you sign that one.
Yeah.
It's a good reminder.
The manager's report.
It's a good manager, it's a good reminder at budget time to remind people that seventy-five percent of what they pay taxes goes to schools.
It's not us.
Veterans Day event. This year's Veterans Day ceremony was a big success, and I'd like to thank once again everybody who participated in the program and those who attended. Letters have gone out to Dave Trombley, our keynote speaker, Carolyn Bruce, the music teacher, and her kids, Father Moreau, who performed the invocation of benediction, and scout master Jeff Carrara. We appreciate everybody again coming out. It was a good event. There will be a staff meeting tomorrow, Thursday, November twenty-first, at nine o'clock. As always, selectmen are invited to attend. The town offices will be closed Thursday and Friday of next week, November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, in observance of the celebration of the Thanksgiving Day holiday. Property taxes were due on Friday, November fifteenth, for any of you who have forgotten to take care of that. The town has received notice from Green Lantern Solar, a solar farm developer of plans to develop a four-acre, five-hundred kilowatt solar farm off Corn Hill Road on land owned by Rick Colburn. The emailed notice we received is in your packets. I forwarded it to the zoning officer, Jeff Byasusi, and to the planning commission chair and vice chair, Mark Winslow and Kevin Blow. And it may be that we might have some more information from tomorrow night to determine whether the planning commission would like to look into this matter or have hearings regarding it, but at the same time, we can always invite the developer to come speak to the select board if that seems like a good option. So very early in the process, we just got the first letter. There's no official filing as yet.
Now, where is that property along the road?
I think there was a photograph.
Yeah, but I couldn't really figure out.
It must be to the east of his garage.
No, but where's this? I don't even know. Is it between?
Between me and the town line.
Between you and the town?
Right.
Just as you come over to town line on the right. The house is right there, and he has a big workshop.
So it's up on top?
It's across from Reed's.
Yeah. Oh, okay, over in there. Okay.
See, we've just been involved in there bringing a three-phase line from Pinnacle, from Route Seven across Pinnacle Ridge and down to us.
Oh, yeah.
And probably that's opened up, I'm just assuming it's opened up the possibility for something like this.
To go in there.
So just put that big one in Thomas's too.
Yeah, that one's, yeah.
There's been some personnel changes at the BLSG Mosquito District. Longtime leader of the organization and chair of the Mosquito District Board, Ben Lot, and the Brandon dentist, has announced that he's hanging it up after many years doing what he's doing for free. Pittsburgh representative Mike Blaisdell has taken over the duties of chairman, and there may be a budget impact here because you may remember last year, we were told we were going to have kind of a one-time increase to deal with legal fees from the lawsuit that was pending. Now it turns out that we may not have that annual contribution drop down again because they may have to put that money into hiring kind of a full-time person to run the organization, because you can't always find people willing to do it for free. So stay tuned. We haven't heard yet, but we expect to get a letter from the BLSG with their annual assessment. The Depot Hill Sewer Project has an update. Last night, the Water and Sewer Commission met, and we all learned that the low bid for the project unfortunately came in a hundred and ninety thousand dollar higher than the engineer's estimated cost of construction. So last night, the members of the Water and Sewer Commission heard from project engineer John Kirin and the chief wastewater operator, Sean Hendy, and voted four to nothing to rebid the job based on a change in the folk, in the approach to the project. The original idea was to replace the two existing pump stations, one halfway down the hill, one at the transfer station, with a big transfer, with a big pump station at the bottom of the hill, which would then pump, collect everything and pump everything uphill. It turns out that in order to pump it all that way uphill, it requires a mammoth pump station, mammoth electrical needs, and also involving re-laying new pipe all the way up the hill to accomplish that pumping. So it seems like the much more affordable option is simply to replace the two existing pump stations where they are. That allows us to put in smaller pump stations, which are nevertheless able to be maintained above grade to keep the safety factor, but which also doesn't require laying new pipe all the way up the road either. So the Water and Sewer Commission was very careful while they endorsed this approach. They're very careful to want to get kind of buy-in from the select board as well, so I think we're going to put that item on the agenda for December fourth. Even though they have been authorized to handle water and sewer matters, they want to get folks involved and informed. And so look for that on the December fourth agenda, but that's the broad strokes of it.
I ask one question, just so we can, didn't the engineers, if the initial plan was to put up one pump at the bottom and pump it up, wasn't that in the original engineering plan?
That is, yeah. Yeah, but they had no idea how much of an expense that large of a pump station was going to be. It's a question that can be asked if we can get the engineer.
Yeah, yeah, you're paying the engineer to figure this stuff out.
I agree, I agree. It would have been nice, and for, just to let you know where they're coming from, they recognize that maybe earlier in the process, they should have identified the fact that such a large pump might generate much larger bids on the project. So they have, I think, already taken steps to assure us that any additional engineering won't cost the town anything in terms of engineering costs. That's Otter Creek Engineering.
Plus, they had the problem with only finding one vendor to supply the pump, which was also a factor.
Right, because when you're the only game in town, you can kind of price it as you wish. So that was a lesson learned, they said, and obviously it's unfortunate, but it looks like we may be able to rebid it at a much more affordable rate, which again will hopefully have less adverse impact on rate payers ultimately.
I wonder if they have projected whether this system that they're designing is up to capacity or allows for growth in future capacity. That's something that needs to be at least considered, whether they go that route or not is another thing, but.
Certainly the lower one.
We shouldn't build a facility that just barely.
Pick up a lot of the town on that lower one.
We shouldn't build something that just barely meets our needs today when there's a potential for growth ten years down the line.
Well, I will point out also that.
Engineers, I would think, would reflect those kind of things.
I will point out that there is, according to rumor, a plan to rebuild Route Seven in the village, which would involve new water and sewer infrastructure.
When did you hear that, John?
Fifty years ago.
I can't confirm it, but I know.
Back in nineteen sixty-one.
So that could be another opportunity to deal with growth in the out years by infrastructure improvements then.
Shouldn't be overlooked.
Understood, understood. The sidewalk scoping grant application has been submitted several days before our deadline, so we know we got in. Kit Hudson stopped by my office several days ago to let us know that his family has decided to discontinue town use of his property as a town trail. That's the one behind the firehouse. VLCT has drafted a model resolution which it hopes towns across Vermont will consider adopting by, with regard to the likely legalization of recreational marijuana. The resolution's in your packet, and I will place that on the agenda for December fourth, as they'd like to hear from us by the end of the year for the legislature. Tax sale update. Another taxpayer has made a payment to resolve their debt, so we're now down to five parcels in delinquent tax sale jeopardy at the moment. I have received a letter of application from an interested Lister candidate. Per Chief Hooker, we will put it on the agenda for the December fourth meeting agenda. And then finally, I have an update on the cell tower activity that we've been monitoring. I had, after our last select board meeting at the Lothrip School, contacted Janil Smith, who was the AT&amp;T representative. I told her first that the town had voted unanimously to oppose the Oxbow location, that is four to nothing with an abstention, against the Oxbow Road location, and second, I had requested on behalf of the town a second balloon test if that site is going forward. And this is the email she sent back as an update on Friday. "Hi, John, we submitted an application to the owner of the tower on Sangamon Road. It was determined that a centerline antenna rad center of one hundred and forty would provide coverage that would be acceptable, though not as good as the Oxbow location. The tower owner is investigating the feasibility of a drop and swap of the tower. The tower recommended by Shane was rejected by RF as being too far south. I had requested consideration of any antenna rad center in anticipation of a potential drop and swap on that one as well, but due to it being nearly four miles away from the target, RF said it could not achieve the target coverage for Pittsburgh. I am hopeful about the Sangamon Tower. Otherwise, we will likely proceed with Oxbow, which sits at the Search Ring Center. I think we should have a sense within a few weeks when we have finalized the location. The plan is to give abutting residents and the town a two-week advance notice, weather-dependent, we need winds to be under four miles an hour, for a balloon test. We can take photos for simulation for anyone's land who might, who signs a write-of-entry form, which I will provide. Hopefully, this update will be sufficient detail. Let me know if there's anything else I can answer." And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, John. Any questions on the town manager? Do we have any remarks on the board tonight? Hearing none. Do we have any public comment tonight? We're not public tonight. Hearing none, we'll go into all business.
Just a quick update.
Update on the fire burning ordinance.
Yeah, we have noticed, we have published the notice of the adoption of the ordinance, of the amendment to the ordinance, and we will have posted that around town as well at Brar State Statue.
So we need another two weeks, is it?
I think it's a total of forty-five days or so, so we'll let you know when it becomes effective. I'll let Brad know as well.
New business, update on budget preparations.
Yes, chief, we have several department heads here today, which is great, and if you wouldn't mind accommodating me, I can just read through a memo I've done, just kind of giving an overview of things. This second draft of the proposed FY 2021 budget differs very little from the first one that you were sent. The only changes are the additions of expected debt service payments in the water and sewer budgets, and the addition of a departmental budget for Pittsburgh First Response, on the assumption the town wants to go forward with enrolling that group into town government. In doing so, I've simply zeroed out their twenty-five thousand dollar special appropriation and allocated the same amount into one line item as a placeholder for now, until I hear further from PFR about how best to spread those funds among their likely operating expense line items. I have also made a couple other questions about their ongoing expenses, and I hope to be able to flesh out their budget in the next meeting. Despite the best efforts of the select board to keep taxes as low as possible, wages, benefits, and other costs, of course, continue to rise, putting pressure on budgets. For example, this draft reflects the two percent wage increase for most employees, based on the COLA in the union contract, and substantial increases in the premiums for health insurance coverage for our twelve eligible employees. Tonight, I hope to present an executive session, a proposal received from the union, which may limit the amount of these premium cost increases. So maybe there's some good news coming. General fund and highway fund balances are relatively low. This leaves us relatively little room for error in budgeting and less latitude when, if and when we ever wish to spend beyond the budgeted totals going forward. The second, the second draft of the budgets reflects the original requests from the department heads. Nevertheless, the select board has indicated it would like to achieve an overall no-tax increase budget. The good news is that even at this early stage in the budget process, the general fund budgets for the new year is only, and I say only given the size of our budget, only thirty-two thousand dollars over budget when assuming a no-tax increase, while the highway fund budget actually shows a sixty-five hundred dollar surplus, again, assuming no tax increase. I will look forward to your thoughts in the weeks ahead as the budget process moves forward. But in this packet that you have, the figures have been developed by the town manager, but left alone with input from department heads, specifically Helen McKinley, Chad Ujere, Randy Adams, Jeff Byasusi, Mike Warful, Sean Hendy, Chief Hempel, Nicholas Michael, and Mark Winslow. As you can see, Chad, Randy, Bill, and Mike are here with us tonight, prepared to discuss their budgets and, in some cases, work plans. That's true of the rec, department and highway. Second, while the general fund is in relatively stable shape and is able to fund needed goods and services, the highway fund has been more volatile, and that's always going to be the case, depending on winter and unforeseen problems with our roads. As you will recall, town, the town borrowed funds many years ago through bonding to pave beyond what property taxes alone could support. The roads paved with those borrowed funds are now showing their age and need resurfacing before they deteriorate further and require far costlier construction. So both the prior highway foreman, Sean Erickson, and his successor, Chad, have always felt that we should build up the paving fund in order to get back on track with resurfacing paved roads every ten years or so to preserve our investment made all those years ago and with bond fund financing. You'll see tonight that Chad is proposing a sixteen thousand, one hundred dollar increase in paving funds over the current year, and we've both agreed that since we've seen overruns in the salt budget in recent years, we ought to bulk that up to be more realistic, because we can't be looking for bargains when it comes to treating the roads with the proper amount of salt. So we've increased that based on past experience from seventy-nine thousand to one hundred thousand dollars in this draft. The highway, the select board may want to consider modifying the current policy of replacing highway department trucks every ten years and move to something more aggressive like a seven- or eight-year replacement cycle. While this might require the town to appropriate more annually to the one hundred thousand dollars we now do to the highway capital fund, these increased costs may be at least partially offset by, A, trading in vehicles before more expensive non-warranty repairs are needed, B, less lost time when a truck is out for repairs, and C, higher prices from dealers when we want to trade in. Finally, in the last couple of notes, the sewer department revenue budget reflects the end of the income stream from Otter Valley Union High School for work that part-time town employee Jack Shed had performed until August eighth of this year, when he retired. The water and sewer expense budgets reflect adjustments to labor and benefit costs to reflect, A, Jack's retirement, B, Bruce Batcox's expected retirement as water superintendent in May of next year, and C, the recent hiring of Tyler Allen as a full-time employee, splitting time between water and wastewater functions. In tonight's packet, you have some email exchanges between myself and Pat regarding this debt service issue, and also some, another email from Chad Hewitt with thoughts on our budget. So with that said, you can begin with any of these department heads you like, and I'm sure they can kind of roughly outline what they have in mind for their budgets.
Chad, you're first on the agenda.
Score my work plan.
Yeah.
And that's in, that's in tonight's packet?
It's in tonight's packet.
In the budget packet. You've got two separate ones. One's just a budget packet, and first, you'll see the memo. Then you'll see these emails. Then you will see, I think, yes, capital expense budgets, and then the work plans.
Let's start off with contracted work, paving. Like do, last year, like, till we got the grant, do Hollis Secore Road and West Creek Road from Brandon Town Line to, well, two point eight miles, which is almost to Markowski's Garage. I have figures for doing the whole, right, to the intersection, and it's, would it actually increase the budget to thirty thousand versus sixteen thousand? So I was being conservative when I did the original budget, that's why. I just figured I'd throw that in there just to think about how we'd get the whole road done at once. And the Box Culver Bridge, just about past Florence Crush Stone, I believe should be ready for installation.
We're waiting on that last batch of the trans money.
Yep.
And again, we'll crack ceiling, line striping, continue with that. Crack ceiling, probably be able to do some in the spring that we didn't do this fall, and then schedule some for next fall as well. And then hopefully our Santa will get all done with permits and start with that, so. And then we're, again, applying for grants for two different types, the Better Back Roads, Better Roads, Better Roads Grant and Grants and Aid. The Better Roads will be doing Vernon Road and Gold Farm Road, continuing some more ditching, stone line ditching, and getting them to meet standards. Grants and Aid, we'll be replacing some, there's a couple culverts left on West Creek Road towards Proctor that, finish that up, so that road will be all set for hopefully.
That's what our next, next major road to finish would be from?
It's a mile left, there's one box culvert that'll be need to done, to be done as well. So yeah, hopefully, it'll be nicely done soon. Uh, let's see, and then our other work we'll be doing is our standard, I mean, prepping the roads for paving. We have a few culverts to replace, just minor ones that have reached their age limit, Euskau Road, Asia Road. Work on our equipment, and then some other road inventory we had done for a few years, a few years ago. Some improvements on that, we can, and we've done some, but continue to work on those in, without having to go through the grant process. They're minor, minor ditching projects to do.
Questions for Chad?
So if, if we have to cut something from your budget, what are the things we absolutely cannot cut, in your estimation? That's my biggest question.
That's a good question. I don't see anything that's up.
What you're saying is pretty bare bones as it is.
I mean, I think, like you said, I tried to be, like, first time looking at it, I, you know, my kid making his Christmas list, but then went back through and looked and...
Reality setting.
Yeah, pretty much. You know, why, I'll say it's had a little bit of room improvement, but I understand.
And nobody knows what winter brings either, that's, that's one of those...
It started six weeks early.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's something you can't control.
Fortunately, our equipment, breaking down has not been...
Yeah, takes a beating.
So yeah, that's, have your mercy on that. I would like to see everything safe, but...
Okay. Anybody else, any questions?
There's been some talk, it was on the news about, there's some concern about the amount of salt that's going onto the roads in the state of Vermont. And is that anything that, as a small town like Pittsford can, can do, can you use more sand and less salt, or, or, just no way of dealing with that? I mean, what is going to become of that, or don't you have any idea? Probably nobody knows.
Yeah, I mean, I have heard that as well, especially up around the lake.
Yeah.
Well, they claim it's contaminating water and stuff like that.
Yeah.
The salt.
But then they say all the extra sand residue does the same thing, so, so I don't know what...
Well, if you put a lot of sand on, and where there's houses, they complaining about that, having to clean up the mess in the spring, but...
Sand not so much.
You have to make the choice whether you want to drive on a snow road or a sanded road.
People use the word sand, but a lot of the highway departments use pretty, pretty good diameter stone.
Yeah, it's not sand.
Our trucks stay on the road.
Well, Tom, you just missed that. Chad reminded us that at least it keeps his trucks on the road.
Oh, it does. Oh, yeah, it does.
Personally, I mean, I, I get out pretty early in the morning, and you guys do a good job up in my neighborhood, I have no complaints whatsoever. And if I leave at three o'clock in the morning, I probably won't have anything on the road, but after five o'clock in the morning, you guys have been through. And I know how that works, and I work with it, even though you're not aware of it.
Joe, I think they do a wonderful job.
They do a good job.
I really do, and I mean...
Yeah, you're all over the town.
I am, I mean, you get some people driving with HUA, you know, but they really do a good job.
I need, I need a translation on that.
Oh, no, you won't, no, I figured it out.
I think I got it. I think I got it.
I mean, truly, going around, and I, and I kind of know the cold spots and stuff, I've always checked them first, but I personally think they do a pretty good job.
That's the one thing I would say this year, have you been taking lessons from Brandon on plowing? Because Brandon leaves, leaves a foot and a half, two feet on the edge.
We don't have our wings on, all the trucks, because we don't want to do a lot of shoulder work yet.
Okay, no, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Because I was like, oh, must be they've been learning to the same people that teach Brandon.
Yeah. No, it's kind of nice.
Oh, no, I, I'm just, and I'm not, but it's, it makes the road a lot narrower when that, foot and a half is missing, on each side.
I noticed it on the upper plains, you'll notice.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's about this much.
About that much left, yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Hopefully this time of year it melts and it's gone. It's not working out right now.
Yeah, it makes her job a lot easier, Chad.
Yeah, it does. Well, thank you, Chad. Okay, Randy, I guess you're next on the hot seat. I don't know if it's really a hot seat.
No, and there's also a work plan in your packet right?
Yeah, we got a work plan in your packet, so I don't know if you really need to go word for word with it.
I'd like to also thank Chad for work they do at the rec area. They help us stay out our foundation for our lifeguard shelter, that was torn recently.
Yeah.
Our work plan kind of stays the same as last year, with some programs coming and some programs leaving. We liked certainly when the mosquito, we were sprayed for the first time in 2018, that was a huge hit.
Oh, yeah.
And for some reason, the mosquitoes weren't that bad this year.
Well, this year they weren't bad.
After the wet spring, it kind of dried out nicely.
Yeah, it did.
Right.
So it was, it was kind of a nice year. Hopefully it'll be the same next year, but you never know.
The one thing that is, that we're asking about is our disco. Volunteers have been mowing recently, Terry Boar, they've been working over there for a tenure, volunteering different time and energy, mowing and trimming. Terry doesn't think, well, I've been told that Terry will not be coming back this summer, and that means they've been using his Toro mower, the whole Toro mower that he used to work with as a commercial agency, so. They were asking for an increase of $500 to have Tony please, and he paid 40 hours a season.
The mower?
The mower, yeah.
Seems like a modest amount.
And I'm just, I'm asking for 20, 20, and then 20, 20 more. The other thing that goes with that is that the rec department will need by a want behind mower, since I've talked to Mr. Habersohn several times about that there's money left in the budget.
We have money in the budget.
Yeah, we've actually morphed the mower replacement fund into kind of a generic capital budget.
So you've got money in there.
A couple of dollars in there.
So that's not going to increase your budget, so. Nope, that's good. Good. Any questions for Randy?
No, I'd just like to take this opportunity to say...
Do a heck of a job.
...program you've got, and everyone seems to always view that as one of the top things that bring and keep people here in Pittsford.
It sure is. Yep, we appreciate it, and thank you for all your hard work. It's a lot of work. People don't realize how much work it takes to run that department.
Oh, boy. Programming, there's more programming all the time, it seems.
All the time. Thank you.
Police Department.
Yeah, this is the first time we've asked the chief to participate, because I thought he's missing all the fun.
He's missing all the fun, but we get to...
I'm going to do a little crack ceiling this year.
That's a different kind of crack, though.
You don't do the part, Chad.
I think you should have done it last year.
Or do you?
No.
No, you're also...
Was it Tom?
Huh?
Should have cracked ceiling last year.
You should have, yeah.
But, but given the size of the budget, we thought it'd be good to kick the tires and kind of give an explanation about what you have in mind in terms of the department.
Well, I, I, I'm going to grow by one part-time person, probably, is to replace Timmy Cornell. We, we've got Dave Soya Jr. scheduled to go through the academy, so, but he's probably...
It's not really adding, you're just replacing.
Yeah, just replacing one, and he's, before he's out on his own, he's probably nine months to a year out, so that will be the one, the one big replacement. As far as equipment, knock on wood, everything is fairly new and up and running. I am going to draw the speed card in here in a couple weeks and store it for the winter to save...
Where is it now? See, it's gone from me.
Yeah, we, we, Chad didn't want him to try it, see what it, and I told him that they could have it just before we put it away for a week or so, and it's up there along these Pittsford roads, right at the line. But I will draw that back in here, saving from salt and snow and sesh and, you know, and I will, now that I'm in a hurry of things, I will be able to pick it up and put it back into the garage, out of the weather for the winter. And other than that, I really, I've just, since, since we had the meeting this morning, they says to me, well, I might ask you, what, what do you, what can I cut from your budget? I really don't know what you can cut from the budget.
You shouldn't have, Chad.
But anyway, but anyway.
You learn quick.
I, I, I was sitting here scanning, I don't know, I don't know what you want to, you know, there are some unforeseen things that, that go out, come out of my budget that I have no control over, and...
This budget doesn't touch the idea of Proctor yet.
No, 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 exactly.
That's still very vague and uncertain at this point.
Yeah, that's not even going to be considered at all.
We're just bringing Dave on to bring us back up to what we had, and give me a little more flexibility in schedule.
And this is the second year that we've had the amped up amount for the cruiser replacement program up to $15,000 a year, and hopefully that helps us eat away at the shortfall we've had in the past.
Well, we, we, we should get...
The board is always free to recommend increases, and we could even try to do more, but that is...
Well, if we're going to try to hold the line this year, it's my, how do you do it?
We should have three more years on the Durango unforeseen circumstance, and the truck, we should have five, at least five years.
I think it's for the motorcycles.
What?
Motorcycle.
You're going to put them on motorcycles, is that what you said? That wouldn't be cheaper.
You can do a vehicle with one horsepower.
Well, for summertime, summertime, maybe.
You can buy them on a hundred coal.
We tried that and run them.
Didn't work.
Didn't work?
No.
It's really, no, it's, I'd rather have, you know, a 2,600 pound car wrapped around me if I'm going to crash than...
Yeah. Then go slide down the road with a helmet to protect you.
I thought you were going to say a horse.
Uh, well, that's another option.
If you, if you want to provide the fence in the grazing area, we'll, we'll ride. I don't, I, I, I just don't see anything, Dave.
No.
Okay.
Okay? I'm praying that you guys mercy.
Anybody else got any questions for Chief Warfel?
Is your, is your budget up this year over last year? Are you holding the line, or how is it?
It's up less than $1,200 bucks.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
I'll be figure that. And that's, so that's, that's 234 to 235,000.
Not counting anything to do with Proctor, if we do something totally different.
We're, we're still a long ways away from that.
A long ways away on that.
My, like I said, my concern is Pittsford.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Chief Hempel?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We do have an increase in our proposed budget from last year. One of the increases is our labor. Last year, we had a big increase in labor, a lot of calls, our hours were up, and I can see that continuing. Some of it is the mutual aid, which we're reviewing the mutual aid, and we've got to help the other towns out, because they help us. You don't have as many people around during the day, and, you know, it's a problem, it really is. I feel we've probably got the most dedicated crew there is, and, you know, if we can keep it that way, I'd like to keep it that way. Another area is our personal protective equipment, which we really can't quite cut corners on that. We piece the cops with every gear. We do have some gear that is, that is getting under and needs to be replaced, this is personal gear for our, our people, to protect them properly. Those are our feelings. And the new equipment, we went up on that, that helps cover that end of it too. We're still fighting the air pack thing. We replaced five, we need to replace our projected proposal is to replace another five this year, just to stay in line. I don't know if all of it gave, we may not have been involved in it, but we did get a grant a few years ago for air packs, and we replaced them all at once, and the problem is now they're up for replacement. I'm not saying the grant wasn't a good thing, it was a great thing, but, and, you know, so now we're running into the, we're running into the problem of having to replace them. And we have, we had had our bottles tested early so we could save on replacing some of them, so. The plan we got, I think, if, if we stay with our plan, probably some this year, skip a year, but, you know, we have been...
Sometimes it's work where we do a, work from two budgets, and get your order placed, and it's...
Oh, I see, yeah.
You pull from each budget.
Budget, and get them all.
But you can have a bargain by, by the big purchases.
Totally, in the department, there's 18, 17, 18 of them?
Yeah.
The critical part, like Chief will mention, is you have to maintain your interior guys have to be up and current. I mean, that's, you get somebody hurt and killed, we would swing.
And all the crap that's, all the chemicals and stuff that are in houses now, it's...
You have to, you just have to.
We may find that we can cut our, our quantity of air packs that we have, and we may not need 17.
No, we may not need that many, but you're going to need at least your, your complete interior crew has got to have their packs up, and, because they're all face fitted and everything else.
The other thing is that we want to stay firm on our truck maintenance, so, you know, that's pretty important. We've got to have them working properly to do the job, so. We've got some good equipment, Tom and Butch left us with some good equipment, and we're trying to maintain it, so.
Could you get better twill paper in there?
Hey, that comes from up here, so if you've got any complaints, take it right over there.
I'd be happy to discuss that with you, Mike.
I'll bet he can take you.
It takes two layers of skin.
You've got a garden home down there.
I don't think the Herald picked that up, but he's... He's smiling, though.
He's live streaming it.
Man, I'm telling you what, boy, that's the brutal stuff there. That core cob looks better every time.
Yeah, but somebody broke the little hammer, basically. Anything else, Chief?
No, I think that's about it. Our communication thing is, we did drop that a couple, a couple thousand dollars, we were anticipating a... We're anticipating an increase. We're going to try to put some repeaters up on our antenna sites to give us better radio coverage, because our coverage is terrible. But it looks like the cost of it isn't going to be quite as much as we thought, so, yeah, we're going to try to put the first one on Killington antenna site, and we're going to go with that and see how it works. There's going to be a cost to us, we're going to have to reprogram our pagers and radios.
Yeah, that's a cost a little bit.
I think it's worth a try, and the state police can talk all over the state with a portable radio.
We can't tie next door.
Sometimes we can't use our portable radios, tying each other on a system, so, it's just, you know, it's just something that needs to be updated, and, anyway, we're trying. The counties, the counties try, in fact, we're going to another meeting tomorrow, so. Other than that, Tom, I think...
Good?
I had a couple of questions if I could.
Yep.
So I'm looking also at your capital expense budget request, and my question is, you've got two things listed for 2021, and that's five SCBA packs and five sets of protective gear. Is that already encompassed in this budget, or is additional, that's what you'd like to do beyond your budget?
Something possibly we might, would like to do beyond, I suppose.
Well, the only, the reason I mention it is that there's really no capital budget for the fire department, other than the truck replacement fund. If we wanted to start making plans for big, big capital expenses, the board might want to start appropriating money toward a capital fund, set up one.
I think we probably, we might have to wait a couple of years on that and see, all we do with our present plan, I guess.
Well, that's, that's certainly...
What I, what I did, and I assume Bill does the same thing, we kind of wait till the end of the year to do our budget, when we spend the bulk of the money on the fire department.
Yeah.
It's always been sort of that way. That way, if we have extra monies that were there, we sometimes, because the budget is a, it's a...
It's a, it's a best guess.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a guess as to what you can do. So if you've got, say, 150,000, you only spent 130.
Yeah.
You've got 20,000, you probably could play with, maybe move it over to one of these items that you really need, and do it that year. That's what, what we've always kind of done at that way.
Tried to do, yeah.
And without going back and asking for addition.
Last year, I think we, we didn't act quick enough.
Right, right. So this year, I'm sure we'll watch it and see.
I do see in the next year, we're looking at the new ladder truck. And we do have, you know, several hundred thousand dollars already on account for truck replacement, but I know the chief has talked to me...
There again, that purchase would probably be a lease to buy like we've done on all the other trucks. You come in with a good sized down payment, and you finance it for, because the finance rates are so phenomenal, it doesn't pay you to go spend your whole wad at one time, and that lets you not deplete your total fund.
Yeah.
That's what we've always done in the past, so that, you know, you're going to, it's going to take it probably, I'm going to guess, almost a year to spec the truck out, then you're talking a year to have it built. They don't build them in six months. It usually takes about a year to build these trucks. They're so sophisticated in today's world.
But didn't, isn't that latest truck, you got a ladder truck?
That is, but that, that was, that's a, that's a 1998.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, but it's up, your life on, people don't realize this, too, after a certain number of years, NFPA doesn't recognize it, now your insurance rate squips the roof. It, it's a catch 22, trust me. So we've tried to keep it so that, you know, this truck is probably going to go another, we're hoping, what, two, three, four years, possibly? So by the time he specs one out, gets it on order, the monies that are going in here every year is, what, 80,000 a year?
Yeah.
No? You're going to have another two, three years going in there, which I think there's, what do you got in there now, about four, roughly?
Four, I believe.
Around four, around 400,000 there now. So you'll have a half a million or more in that account by the time they go to place an order. And then you'll probably have another year or two that you're going to have monies going into it, and then finance the balance for five, six years.
We are going to get our truck, our committee together after the first year, so, start...
That takes a while to even do that. It's a, it's a long process.
We do have a gentleman on the fire department that was on Killington that specs.
He's spec'd out two of their ladder trucks.
Two, two ladder trucks.
So he's quite familiar.
They helped us. Yeah, we're not looking for anything elaborate.
No.
Something to do the job. We're all, we're all taxpayers, too, so, you know. It, it hurts every year when you pay the taxes, for sure, but...
So you want to continue with the low-cost toilet paper?
Yeah.
Michael just have to bring in an extra roll.
Bring it from home.
Bring it home.
Bring it from home.
You better write your name on it, Mike, so someone will be going. I'm going to. That is some brutal stuff.
Anybody got any more questions for the chief? Here are none. We'll move on to the relocation of the Florence Fire Station.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Yes, thank you all.
If you don't want to stay, if you don't feel you have to.
And Bill and Tom, if you want to stay for a few minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
As you know, the fire department has kind of felt a little bit of a pinch over at the Almia facility that has been generously leased for $0 per year by Almia, where we have pre-positioned a fire vehicle. The problems are that, A, if there's an Almia problem, it's probably better to arrive from off-site, rather than be stuck inside in the middle of the problem. And also, there's lots of train and, and truck vehicle conflicts that can slow your response time to Almia or elsewhere in Florence. And I think with that in mind, the thought was, maybe we ought to find a place to relocate the fire substation, build a modest shelter for it with water and septic systems, electrification, so that you could have at least a vehicle there all the time to do rapid response to Florence. Is that basically correct?
Basically, plus it was a maintenance issue, too, we've had for years over there, with the ground wipe product gets into a lot of the controls and stuff on that truck.
It's really, it's really, almost, it's probably worse than salt.
Yeah, it comes up to the switches and relays, and, and we don't have water in there, so you can't wash it.
Can't wash it down.
You can't wash it. You wash it in Pittsford, and you take it back over there, but by the time you back it in, it looks worse than it did when you, when you came over here. So that's one of the problems. Butch and I have been working on this for, what, just 10 years or, or better, trying to get a site. And what kind of brought this to light was Dave and I, we, we've had a, a site there for, what, three years that they were, been talking about?
We were talking about the McCullough property.
The McCullough property. Where we talked about having that, because there was a septic system there.
Yeah.
But we didn't know if it was approved or not. Well, anyways, to, to back up, that was Almia's site that they were willing to share or relinquish to us. And here, a few months ago, we wanted to kind of better the end of the truck route to the West Creek Road, where that corner is, where those trucks go around there, and they're always cutting that Skye's lawn off all the time. It's, it's been a problem for many years. So Almia agreed to let us take, shave off some of that lot, which was the old champagne.
Swan, most recently Swan.
Yeah, Swan or champagne.
Yeah.
And they recently just tore down that building. And we were over there looking to see what, Chad was at that day and saying, did you do the work? Yeah, we did it. And I said, but really didn't shave off what we were talking about. So we got looking at it, and we had some people there from Almia, and it was kind of our idea that we needed more of that land to make that light sightline better from Markowski's going south, and where you could kind of tee the end of the truck route a little bit more than just that real sharp corner, come up and then a better swing. Well, as we stood there looking at it, all of a sudden, the, the light bulb came on and talking to Almia people, they said, well, if we're talking, if we have to get somebody to survey this, give the town or relinquish, or let us buy whatever it is, wouldn't it make more sense to even just swap the sites? Because it's, the site is about the same acreage, almost identical.
1.9 acres, yeah.
Yeah, almost two acres of land. So that's kind of where that came about, would save money on both parts, Almia and us.
And at this point, we probably can say that we're thinking about approaching Almia with a proposal...
Right.
...to take ownership of that parcel, and we probably should talk about our term strategy in executive session.
This will be the executive session. So that's kind of where we're at, and to see where we can go there.
That'd be a lot better location. It's more centralized.
Oh, gosh, you go north, south, and straight back to town. You're right there, you're right there. Plus, you've got water, you've got sewer, and you've got electricity right there on site, so, and it would let us take a piece of that front property in town to straighten that out all at the same time.
Yeah.
So you're going to accomplish two things at once. So we'll, we'll discuss that in executive session. So I don't know if you've got any further, but that's kind of where we're at. It probably won't happen for whenever, but it's, we got to start somewhere. But we got to start somewhere.
At least you got something to work on.
Yep. So, other than that, with that said...
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
We appreciate everybody coming tonight, and that will run the executive session.